A roll call, please.
Yes, Dr. Blau.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Heinrich.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
I myself present, Ms. Weems.
I am here, thank you.
You have a full call.
We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We will start today's meeting with some recognitions. This is one of the highlights of the year and also lowlights, if I'm honest with you, but we are looking forward to celebrating each of you today. I'll turn it over to Dr. Coffin to get started.
All right, I would like to welcome Ms. Margaret Hendrickson, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, to the podium to begin our recognition with our CTE and CTSO students.
Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Kelly Coffin. If I could have our amazing CTE advisors, both Janet, Kristin, and Sean, if they could come up, because they will be my co-pilots and actually doing most of the piloting. I'm just here to wish them well. And so, we are very excited to have our Career Tech Ed program here in Farmington Public Schools at all three of our high schools. And tonight is an opportunity for us to recognize student leadership in the area of CTE. Many of our CTE students participate in what's called CTSOs, which are leadership competitions that our students take part in, in an area of programs. So whether that's health sciences, business management. And so what we're going to do tonight is first recognize three outstanding CTE Students of the Year that got recognized at Oakland Schools. Janet Cadeau will help us with that. And then Janet Cadeau, who is one of our CTE teachers at Farmington High, is going to share the names of our students from Farmington High that are connected to CTSOs, not just the Health Science Program that she helps support there. Then we'll have Kristin Patton and Sean Reisdorf from North Farmington High School also helping to introduce our students tonight. Oh, sorry, Chris. And, sorry, and Chris Abbott from North Farmington High School. They're multiplying. That's a good thing. So as, as your students come up, they can come to the center and you can come and kneel and take some pictures. And then when we have like a whole building of Farmington High kids and a whole building of North, you're welcome to come up and take pictures.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Coffin, and welcome guests. And retirees, yay. It's a big night. So I have the honor of being here to present some awards tonight for our CTE students and our CTSO students. So we'll first take a look at our outstanding student awards for Oakland Schools. We had one nominated from Farmington High School and one from North Farmington. So Arianna Wolf and Kinsey Whitfield, you make your way up with your families. So Arianna is a Farmington High School student and she's participated in the two-year course of study with excellence in the classroom and beyond. She obtained her 10-hour OSHA safety training for healthcare certificate, BLS certified, and received her credential through NHA for a patient care technician. And Kinsey received her EKG certification and is waiting to apply and take her NREMT exam. So we appreciate your efforts in the Health Science Classroom and we applaud you for your excellence in education in that Medical Skills Program. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thanks. And as a Health Science teacher at Farmington High School, I'm also a HOSA advisor. And HOSA is an international organization for future health professionals for students who are interested in pursuing a healthcare career. Participation in this student organization allows students to develop their content-specific knowledge and leadership skills in one of over 50 events that they can choose from in a competitive event program. This year, Farmington High had 95 students who competed at the regional conference, 72 who went on or who were eligible for the state level, and then 65 competitors, our highest group ever, with 17 placing in the top eight, and 11 medalists eligible for competition at the International Conference in June. And nine of the qualifiers will be competing in Nashville. So I'll call you up and you can bring your families for pictures if you'd like. So first and second place respectively, Shivani Sawe and Amrita Endutrantala. Akshay Kumar and Shruti Kaagamesh. They placed third place in creative problem solving. And then Shriam Kira was second place in chemical lab science. And we have a dream team, I call them, in the mental health promotion category. They came in second place. And they also published an ebook available on Amazon called Beyond the Mirror, Journey to Embrace the Real You, as they celebrate taking care of your mental health and did a whole promotion on that in our, in our school. So Yashwini Ravula, Mariah Bustos, Maria Ann Minaj, Minaj Kazee, Favor Evelto, Sanvi Gomuchu.
Hello. Do you want to do yours first? Okay. At North Farmington, we had one student who made it to the international level for HOSA, Mahad. This, this was Mahad's first year. He took first place at states and he are at regionals and then took first place at states and then unfortunately has not, is not going on to the international competition, but he competed in the biotechnology event. So I'm very proud of him.
So congratulations, international qualifiers, and we wish you the best at the Nashville Conference. And if you want to take pictures, either family can come home. You're good? At least take one. Someone can't coordinate all that. All right. No, maybe you can get some after. All right. I'll get your certificates to you in a minute. And then I have the honor of, oh, go ahead. I, I started the middle school chapter about, for HOSA, about eight years ago and passed it off about two years ago and then got the honor of doing it again this year for the states and international follow-through. So I'd like to have Eva and Anya Metta for Health Career Display. They'll be competing in Nashville. Om Metta and Kival Shah, Health Career Display also. Risha Chava for Foundations of Medical Terminology and Suvan Paul Raj, Foundations of Medical Reading. Congratulations. Best of luck at ILC. Thank you very much for recognizing these young people and we wish them the best as they compete in the International Conference and go on for their future health professions. Thank you.
Chris Abbott will present the awards, starting the awards for North Farmington.
For BPA, is Simran here? Okay, for DECA, we had four qualify for Nationals and two, actually, or three went. And Andrew Coulter is here. He was unfortunately the only one that was able to make the meeting. And it's amazing because he was, this was his first year. He's a senior. And it was his first year in DECA and he won his state competition and made it to internationals in Orlando and did very well down there.
Chris, would you mind reading all the names, even if they're not here? The names of the students not able to be here?
Vibe of Diamond, Samantha Karub, and Trinity Samuels were the other three.
Good evening. I'm honored to be here tonight to represent my chapter at North Farmington High School for Skills USA. We've built the program over the last three years, taking one to state to 12 to state to this year, taking 22 to state, of which half qualified to move on. But with Skills USA, it's a little different. At the state level, if you're not first, you don't get to go to Nationals. So that's good news, bad news. The really good news out of the 22 that I did take, six have qualified for Nationals. There would have been a seventh, but I brought in to Skills USA a new competition this year for automotive electrical only, and that's a state-only competition. So we, we're going to recognize this individual for that accomplishment, but unfortunately, he couldn't be here, and that would have been Drake Laura. He actually beat the competitors, the second place, by over 100 points. So it was pretty impressive. Next on my list is an outstanding student, which honestly, I would have liked to recognize him as a CTE Student of the Year, but he's been nominated before. He is not only a state winner once, but twice, now three times. He's finished as high as fourth at, sorry, as high as third at Nationals and fourth last year. And I'd like to recognize Aiden Hawkins. Aiden's competition was automotive maintenance and light repair. Next, I'd like to recognize a student that got to compete in a competition that's not necessarily auto-specific, but leadership. This is certain categories for certain individuals with disabilities. I know he doesn't like to brag about it, but he needs to be recognized for it because of his accomplishments that he's had with these things that he's worked on. One of the things he told me about with this particular award, that when we went to regionals, he didn't even want to compete. He was that nervous about it. But I forced him because it's my job. And he did well, and we got to states. And when they did the award ceremony, he was like, me? And I was like, yes, that's you. And that would be Owen Verma. His competition, his competition was action skills. And so they have to do a presentation in front of judges. They have to show a skill set. And so we talked it over and he picked torque wrenches. And all the judges were like, oh my gosh, I didn't know there was so much to that. And I'm like, welcome to auto. Let me give the students that were not here. I'll do her with that. I told them, Drake. Another competitor I'd like to recognize who's also not here because he has a job and couldn't be here. He has competed Nationals last year. He's gunning to do better this year. He's competing in mobile electronics and that was Orlando Fuentes. And last but not least, would be, I guess, my own dream team. They were freshmen last year, two of them, and put them in this category. And we did a pretty good job. We won regionals, we won states. They qualify for Nationals, but unfortunately, due to conflicts and scheduling vacation plans, because our Nationals is in June 23rd. They could not compete at the national level, but they're excited too, this year. We have three doing a competition called Career Pathways. And they, you may remember them. They did a presentation with you last year about women in automotive. They're doing a very similar one this year, same type of presentation. But who could not be with us today was Judy Altrash, but the two that are with us today, Tiffany Goldstar, Gold Straw, and Ella Wilson. Ella's a first-year student. Tiffany's a second. Owen's a second year. And Aiden, he's been with me for all four years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Board of Education, and may the rest of the show begin. Thank you.
All right, next I would like to welcome Mr. Brad Paddock, Assistant Superintendent for Talent Development and HR, to recognize our retirees.
Good evening, Dr. Coffin, President Weems and the Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity to honor our wonderful 2024-25 school year retirees. It is a privilege to assist in this evening's culminating event for our retirees in attendance. Tonight, we celebrate the retirees from our district who have collectively contributed decades of wisdom, passion, and unwavering commitment to the field of education. This evening, we're going to honor 24 retirees. Between our reception this afternoon, building-wide celebrations that are taking place throughout the district in the past and in the near, future weeks, there will be a total of 46 retirees this school year. In one way or another, they will be recognized. And collectively, that group represents 1,343 years of service combined in education. Of the 1,343 years of combined service in education, approximately 1,049 of those were right here in Farmington for our community of students. The 24 honorees that will be here tonight have a combined service of 589 years to Farmington Public Schools. The slides that will be behind you are reflective of their years of service in Farmington Public Schools. So for an order of operation for the ceremony, we're going to begin in just a moment. When the speaking begins, the retirees, I believe, are going to stand to the right, right here, so they can be on the, on the camera at home. And the principals and/or supervisor will come up and say a few words of recognition and thank you for their years of service in Farmington. And upon that conclusion, I am going to ask in just a moment that Superintendent Coffin and the Board of Ed, if you could please stand, when they, folks, after they're done having a few things said about them, they will approach the board for a handshake and congratulations. And then if we can make our way to the back there, there she is, thank you Kathleen, we have some nice, exciting gifts, which will include a nice, traditional Farmington Public Schools purple luggage tag for all the travels that await. And in just a moment, I'm going to ask Mrs. Solomon from Gil and Mrs. Henry, former principal at Longacre, to start lining up behind me to start our recognition ceremony. But I do want to remind all of the audience members, as evident in the Board of Education agenda tonight, there will be a brief break after this ceremony. So when we get through all 24 retirees, I'll come back and say a few concluding remarks, and then we will be taking a short recess, unless you want to stick around for the rest of the board meeting. But if that is your chance to leave, if you, if you wanted to. So we're going to go ahead and get started, and thanks for this opportunity tonight. Okay? Mrs. Solomon?
So while our board is lining up, I just want to say my most sincere, amazing congratulations to my retirees, because as I look out, there's many faces that I taught with. There are people who taught my children. There are people who've touched my lives. And I unfortunately can't be here for your speeches because I am Laverne DeFazio. For you young children, our old heads know that person. She is a TV show character. I'm in a production at Seven, so I literally have to scoot out of here after this. But to all my retiree colleagues, I wish you nothing but, but love and happiness. So with that, it is my complete gift and honor. And I know I'm going to cry, Jerry, so just bear with me. I get to speak about Jerry Shade and her remarkable legacy here in Farmington. I think this quote from Rita Pearson says it best. "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection and insists they become the best they can possibly be." Thank you, Terry. Jerry, I can't think of a truer champion than you. Your career centered on students who either doubted their own capabilities and skills or had others doubt them. Under your guidance, students blossom, not just academically, but socially. You insisted on nothing less than the best for them and from them. In fact, your knowledge, care, and support extended to your colleagues as well. You raised up all of those around you. You were the first to jump in and support our staff, no matter if it was a behavior or if it was academics or a trauma need. You gave your all each and every day to everyone, and Gil was the better for it. May you, may your retirement be all that you deserve, because you deserve the world, my friend. And I'm an ugly crier. This isn't good. With that, I am going to turn this over to my dear friend Rhonda Henry, who is Longacre Principal, former Longacre Principal, but now our Assistant Superintendent of Innovation and Strategic Initiatives.
And tonight, I have the honor to speak about Christine O'Sullivan, who is retiring after an incredible 30 years of service in education, including the last 12 years as principal of Gil Elementary. Throughout her career, Chris has made a lasting impact at Kenbrook, Warner, and most recently, Gil. The Gil staff describe Chris as someone who builds strong connections, knows the community, and models family-first in both words and action. Chris has always been a leader who is visible, engaged, and ever-present. She has our backs, values our input, and celebrates our strengths, staff say. Colleagues describe Chris as someone who promotes balance, autonomy, and trust, always grounded in what's best for staff and students. One of her most enduring qualities is how she brings joyful and unforgettable experiences to her school community, whether by transforming the entire building into a scene from a One School, One Book chapter, to eating a worm, yes, a real worm, I witnessed it, in front of her school because they achieved a fundraising effort. Chris reminds us that school can and should be fun. Chris's future plans include working for her family business, watching her son play college baseball, and visiting her other son in Miami, especially in the Michigan winters. As Peter Strappell said, "A legacy is not leaving something for people, it's leaving something in people." What a legacy you leave. Congratulations. And next, I would like to invite Colleen Brinker. Colleen Brinker, a remarkable educator who has dedicated 32 years to shaping the lives of students and supporting, excuse me, colleagues across Flanders, Wooddale, Power, and Longacre. She is known affectionately as the master of schedule, keeping meetings focused and solving scheduling puzzles with absolute genius. Her colleagues describe her as endlessly supportive, fiercely hardworking, and always putting students first with teammates a close second. Students light up with excitement during her science experiments, and staff always smile at her signature email message, "If you smell, if you smell something burning in the fifth grade wing, it's just my science experiment." She's a terrific problem solver, relationship builder, and a steady uplifting presence, always ready to help and never afraid of a challenge. She looks forward to traveling with her husband and exploring new opportunities. As Henry Adams said, "A teacher affects eternity, she can never tell where her influence stops." Congratulations, Colleen, on an extraordinary career and a well-deserved retirement. And now I invite Tracy Goodlesky. Another dedicated educator, Tracy Goodlesky, who has spent all 28 years of her career at Longacre Elementary, creating a classroom where positivity, empowerment, and joy are a daily experience for her young learners. Tracy is known by her colleagues for leading by example, forming strong bonds with students and colleagues, and always sharing her warmth, often through food. Since the very beginning, she has been deeply committed to honing her craft. One of her colleagues, who is here tonight, shared that each summer, she dedicates time to reflect, reorganize units, dive into new curriculum, and collaborate with her team to plan more effectively and efficiently. She has led countless team meetings, exploring strategies, analyzing student data, always trying to meet the needs of our learners. A lifelong learner, there truly isn't a better example of someone who thrives on growth for herself, her students, and colleagues. As she heads into a new season of motorcycle rides with her husband Sean, cooking, shopping, and enjoying a no-rush, easy life, we celebrate everything she's done. Congratulations, Tracy, on an extraordinary career and a well-deserved retirement. Doreen Swift. Doreen, an outstanding educator with 29 years of service across Flanders, Lanigan, Wooddale, Power, and Longacre. She is known for her student-centered classroom where flexible seating, student choice, and creative lessons set the stage for joyful learning. Her colleagues describe her as someone with a great sense of humor, a true joy to work with, and a trusted confidant, always positive and generous with her time and talents. Her morning commute often doubles as a think tank for solving curriculum puzzles and life challenges alike. She's the master of ideas, known for the magical phrase, "Wait, I have that," followed by the perfect resource appearing from her Google Drive like a teaching wizard. A risk taker, a terrific listener, and a builder of strong relationships, she puts students and her colleagues first. Doreen looks forward to traveling and spending time with her granddaughter. Someone once said, "Teaching is the greatest act of optimism," and that's Doreen. Congratulations, Doreen, on an inspiring career and a retirement well-earned. And Lori Vidler. We celebrate Lori Vidler, who has dedicated 35 and a half years to teaching. Thirty-five and a half. Serving across Alameda, Fairview, Hillside, Wooddale, Kenbrook, and Longacre. She has been a tireless advocate for our youngest learners, champion purposeful play as an essential part of their elementary day. Her classroom is a place of imagination and wonder, with joyful learning stations like the pizza parlor, astronaut launchpad, cozy library, and sand table. Laughter, creativity, and student-led learning is what you see in Lori's world. She brings stories to life, dressing as elephants along her sidekick Carol Magoris as Piggy, making Mo Williams proud. In addition to her teaching efforts, Lori single-handedly reinvigorated Longacre's Math Mathathlon program, creating systems and trading parents. Her materials are masterfully organized and engaging. Her colleagues say she gets kids like no one else, and it shows in everything that she does. Lori steps into retirement and she plans to make time for herself, focusing on health, home, and family. As Albert Einset said, "Logic will get you from A to B. Imagination will take you everywhere." Lori, thank you for sparking imagination for over three decades. And now I would like to introduce Early Childhood Center Principal, Mrs. Kirsten Chakella.
Hi, everybody. I am so excited to be here tonight. Excited and sad to represent early childhood and acknowledge two of our peer professionals that we've had in our building. The first one I'm going to call up is Jackie Hurst. Come on up, Jackie. Come on up Jackie. Jackie's been in Early Childhood for 37 years, which is rather incredible. She's been here in Farmington only for the last three years, but I like to think she ended her career in the best place. Jackie has shown up every day, and the thing I'm gonna miss the most about Jackie is her just positive attitude and her positive demeanor, and how she approaches everything in her work with her colleagues, with her children. She is there every day, engaging in authentic conversations with the children, and she's always coming in with a smile. So, working in Early Childhood, it's not always an easy job with some of these little young ones. So Jackie, I'm so excited. She's going to be a grandmother coming up soon. She's gonna spend some time vacationing with her family and her husband, so you're gonna be truly missed, and I'm thankful that I've had three years with you. We're all gonna miss you. Next, we have Stacy Hensley. Stacy, come on up.
So Stacy's been with us for 14 years as part of our special education program as a pair professional. She's been in the classroom and most recently, she has been a traveling pair professional, going to see over 20-some children now in many different classrooms. So, her scheduling all day long is rather crazy, but she approaches everything she does with such a professional mindset. She comes in every day, "What can I do for the program? What can I do for my colleagues? What can I do for the children that I serve?" So, the children know this about her, and she has such a gentle connection with all of the children that she works with. So, what you've done for some of our most needy children, you provided them a safe place, and I'm so grateful to have been able to observe that and to observe the professionalism that you've approached all your tasks throughout the day. So, thank you for everything that you've done for us. And I learned something new just now, standing in line, she's a biker lady. So, I really wanna see pictures of, was her husband here, like, I wanna see pictures of her riding on the back of the bike and taking a bike trip. So, she has a new grandbaby at home that's just been so beautiful and amazing and just beautiful, and she's going to be taking some bike trips, and I hope you come back to visit. So, thank you for everything that you've done.
And now I'm gonna introduce Mr. Andrew LaCroix of East Middle School Principal.
Good evening. She keeps teasing me that I'm gonna cry, which is why I prepared for a roast. No, just kidding. I'm here, fortunate enough to be the one to speak about Deb Colanchi. After 30 years of service to Farmington Public Schools, and actually quite a bit more, because she spent her K-12 years here in Farmington Public Schools as well. She gets to go on to the next stage and enjoy retirement, very well-deserved. Deb is, without exaggeration, one of the most inspiring educators that I've ever worked with. She's innovative, fearless, and relentlessly focused on students. A couple of years ago, her and a colleague decided to try something new, just a little book study. And now, building-thinking classrooms is being implemented all across the district, because that's who Deb is. When she tries something and it works, people notice, and then everyone wants in. Some people coast a bit in their final year, not Deb. This year alone, thanks to her leadership, East is hosting our Second Annual Student-Led Food Truck Rally Thursday. We just opened a new outdoor volleyball court, and with partnership from Central Office, we've been able to secure funds for an outdoor basketball court that will break ground in August. Throughout her career, she's stacked up more titles than most, to name a few, she was Teacher of the Year in 2012 and 13. She's been Math Department Chair, PBIS Chair Basketball Coach, Volleyball Coach, and many more. But still, when I asked her what she's most proud of, she said, "I was never satisfied with what I was doing in the classroom. I pushed myself to try new things, take risks, and be involved in the building." Once again, she made it about kids. On top of all that, she brings heart and humor to East every single day. She organizes tailgates even when Michigan State is losing year after year. She celebrates our staff and our students constantly, and yes, she's responsible for 95% of the pranks that take place in the building, most of which I'm the victim of. Deb, you're brilliant, hilarious, compassionate, and totally irreplaceable. You leave behind a legacy of learning, leadership, and laughter in a district that is better because of you. Thank you for everything you've done. Next, I'd like to invite up Assistant Principal of Power, Ms. Jennifer Katz.
Hello. Today, we celebrate the remarkable career of Susan Kim, who has given 25 years of service. Susan is someone who has left an incredible mark on our Power community. With a deep love of math, a heart full of unwavering support for students and colleagues, and a passion for leadership through initiatives like our eighth-grade Career Days, Susan has been a shining example of what it means to be an educator. Her recognition as Middle School Teacher of the Year is just one reflection of the tremendous impact she has had over the years. But more than awards, it's the lives she's touched, the confidence she sparked, and the inspiration she's planted in the hearts of her students that truly speak her legacy. Susan, as you step into retirement, know that your influence will continue to echo in the classrooms, hallways, and futures of every student you've guided. Thank you for everything. You will be deeply missed but never forgotten. Next, we celebrate the retirement of a truly special teacher, someone who has made a lasting impact through kindness, positivity, and genuine care for others. Tracy Mastinbrook has always gone beyond the lesson plan, building strong relationships with students, offering encouragement with a warm smile, and helping anyone in need without hesitation. What made her stand out wasn't just her dedication of 30 years to teaching, but the way she made every student feel seen, valued, and supported. While we have missed her presence in the halls and classrooms, we are deeply grateful for the inspiration and heart she has brought to our school every day. Tracy, enjoy this next chapter, you've earned every bit of it, and just know, the legacy you leave behind will continue in every student and colleague you've inspired. And now it is my honor to introduce Corey Porterfield, the Principal of Warner Middle
Good evening. It is my honor to recognize and celebrate Kathleen Klinsar, who is retiring after an outstanding 28-year career in public education, including 24 years with Farmington Public Schools. Kathleen has made a lasting impact on FPS community, having taught at Beachview Elementary, East Middle School, and most recently Warner Middle School. Throughout her career, she has been known not only for her dedication to student learning, but also for her kindness, compassion, and unwavering care for those around her. Kathleen's classroom has always been a welcoming place where students felt seen, valued, and supported. Beyond her role as a teacher, Kathleen has been deeply involved in many aspects of school life. She has led a variety of community service projects, served as a special Olympics coach and volunteer, and has taken on leadership roles such as MTSS Committee Co-Chair and Social Committee Chair. Her work in and out of the classroom has helped shape a positive and inclusive school culture wherever she has been. Kathleen has shared that she has truly enjoyed her teaching career in FPS and cherishes the many special memories she's made along her way. Her legacy of kindness, service, and dedication be felt a long way after her retirement. We thank Kathleen for her many years of service and wish her nothing but happiness, health, and well-deserved relaxation in the next chapter of her life. I'd like to welcome up next, Principal at Farmington Steam Academy, Mrs. Gianna Morozic.
Good evening. It's my honor to speak a little bit about Ms. Jeannie Buttman. Jeannie is absolutely a cornerstone of our front office. She's a wealth of knowledge, always willing to help, and solidly professional in the most challenging of circumstances. Jeannie has been working in the field of education for 21 years. In her 11 years with Farmington Public Schools, Jeannie has worked at Farmington Steam, Beachview, East, Harrison, Farmington High School, North Farmington High School, Kenbrook, Wood Creek, Gill, Power, and Visions. Wow, I was right. Jeannie shared that she began her work in Farmington as a newnate at Beachview, where her own children were attending school. She then began working as a special education pair professional in various buildings. Jeannie said, "This was a very rewarding experience for me, as I learned so much from these amazing students and their incredible teachers." Jeannie also shared that "I have had the privilege of working with some amazing staff within the many buildings I have worked. My current school that I have been at since 2017 has become like a second family to me. I will miss my amazing coworkers very much, as well as the many parents and students I have had the opportunity to work with." Congratulations, Jeannie, we'll miss you. I'd now like to introduce Central High School Principal, Ms. Monica Nemec.
And now we would like to proudly honor Alyssa Bingham for her remarkable 30-year career in public education, including the last seven years dedicated to Farmington Public Schools. Alyssa has served with passion and purpose at Forest, East, Power, and now Farmington Central, leaving an undeniable mark on each school. Her accomplishments are many, two Golden Apple Awards, a Bosch Grant that brought a sensory room to Power, and the Oakland Schools Above &amp; Beyond Award. She's been a powerful advocate for equity, serving on the Equity 2030 Grant Committee, earning Equity Partners certification from Indiana University, and leaning experiences like the Human Rights Guided Tour at the DIA. Alyssa, your legacy is one of compassion and excellence. Thank you for your extraordinary service to FPS, and even more so for the love and guidance and hope you've given to every student you've touched. May this next chapter be filled with the same love and light you've so generously shared with others. And now I'd like to introduce Farmington High School Principal, Mrs. Chris Meesner.
Good evening. Today, we celebrate the remarkable career of Kim Adams, a dedicated math teacher, a passionate track coach, and a fierce advocate for students at Farmington High School for the past 26 years. Kim has supported thousands of students, not just through equations and meets, but by believing in their potential, cheering them on, and never letting them forget what they're capable of. Her unwavering commitment to their success has left a lasting remark on our school. Kim often speaks of the gratitude for the students, I'm sorry, for the support she's received from the FHS family, including the staff, students, and parents. And although it all, she has built friendships that go far beyond the classroom or the track, friendships that will truly last a lifetime. Now, Kim looks ahead with excitement to a new chapter, retirement, and enjoining her husband on a well-earned path. Kim, thank you for your heart, your strength, and your years of service. You will be deeply missed but always remembered at FHS.
Thank you. Here we are, celebrating an incredible legacy, Mr. Tom Avasik. For 34 years, Tom has been a quiet force of calm, kindness, and clever wit at Farmington High School. His genuine smile has welcomed thousands of students and staff alike, making the halls feel a little bit warmer every day, even though he wears that yellow and blue. Tom's passion for teaching found its greatest expression in AP Statistics, a course that he pioneered and has taught for over 26 amazing years. With patience, humor, and an uncanny ability to make numbers come alive, he turned formulas into life lessons for many, many students. But beyond the curriculum, Tom's true impact is measured in the lives he has touched, always humble and always grateful. He is often said to be blessed to be a teacher at Farmington High School, but the real blessing was ours. Tom, thank you for everything. We issue you a retirement filled with the same joy that you brought to our school, to all the students and the staff every single day.
All right. Today, I have the honor to honor the incredible career of Kevin Meesner, a devoted educator who's 30 years of service to Farmington Public School has lasting, wow, let me start all over. Kevin just threw me off. Okay, sorry about that. That's what he does to me. It was my crying, it was the crying. Today, we honor the incredible career of Kevin Meesner, a devoted educator who's 30 years of service to Farmington Public Schools, has left a lasting impact on the students and colleagues alike. From Harrison High School to Farmington High School, Kevin has been a champion of science education, leading with both expertise and heart. His leadership in the International Baccalaureate Program helped to shape a generation of critical thinkers, and he even had the rare and perhaps slightly nerve-wracking experience of teaching his own child. Kevin's legacy goes beyond, Kevin's legacy goes beyond the classroom. He has mentored countless science teachers, generously sharing his wisdom while enduring more than a few good-natured jokes, especially those around his famous irrational fears. Kevin, thank you for your dedication, your leadership, and your humanity. You've been a pillar of this community, and we wish you a retirement full of peace, adventure, and maybe a little less teasing.
All right. Once again, we are here to celebrate the incredible career of Mr. Mike Steele, an inspirational band director who's 28 years of service have filled the halls of Farmington Public Schools with music, passion, and pride. From Farmington High to Power Middle School and even Our Lady of Sorrows, Mike has shared the joy of music with thousands of students. He takes well-deserved pride in his accomplishments of his band, from MSBOA to state festivals, and even the community outreach performances. And who could forget COVID marching band? Against all odds, Mike made it happen. Not only did he make it happen, but he made band bounce back bigger than ever. Mike's commitment extends far beyond the bandroom. Whether it was a pep rally, a parade, or even an event that sparked school spirit, when I asked very last minute, Mike was always ready to support. He also never missed a chance to thank his fellow FPS music colleagues for their diligence and their heart, and deeply values the district's support in growing a program that has changed lives. Mike, your legacy is one of joy, resilience, and harmony. Thank you and congratulations on a well-deserved retirement. Next, I'd like to introduce Special Ed Supervisor, Doreen Forrester.
It's my greatest honor to be here to celebrate the retirement of Kelly Zuby. Kelly is a kind and loving person who has cared and supported our most complex learners for 20 years with Farmington Public Schools in our SXI department. She had an opportunity to reflect with me on some of her fond memories. Kelly had a brief time where she spent her initial beginning of her career as a pair professional in the kindergarten program, and then she was bumped, and she took a position at Cloverdale Developmental Center, which was our center-based program for SXI students. Kelly had the great pleasure of describing her very first week of school with me at the Cloverdale Development Center, in which she was hit multiple times a day, had her hair pulled, and multiple times she was, they attempted to bite her in the classroom. She told me she went home at the end of the week and decided she was going to have to really toughen up and learn to bob and weave, and that's what she's done ever since for our students in the SXI department. She has explained to me how in her time with the SXI department, she has She has explained to me how, in her time with the SXI department, she has learned the true meaning of friendship, collaboration, and teamwork, because she understands wholeheartedly that it is a team that supports our most complex learners, and that together we can accomplish everything. She shared with me some of the greatest friendships and lifelong relationships that she has with her fellow colleagues from the SXI department. And SXI she has supported all the way from third grade through the post-secondary program in her career, because SXI people move around. She leads with her heart. She does love and care for all of our students and our colleagues, and she will be incredibly missed at the SXI department. We have also had the great pleasure of having her come back to SUB every now and then. So we're very pleased that while we're saying goodbye during her retirement, we'll still be able to say hello occasionally. Thank you, Mary, for all you've done.
I'm terribly sorry. Now, it is my great pleasure to introduce Mr. Joe Green, the Principal of North Farmington High School.
Good evening, everyone. So it is my distinct honor and pleasure to recognize a dedicated, caring, and conscientious groundskeeper, Joe Peltier. My wife is a realtor, and she's hammered into my head the power of curb appeal and how a yard can look. It matters, right? You can have everything you want on the inside, but if the outsides don't look good, you're not going to get the looks. And what Joe has done in a dedicated 40 years of full-time and two years of subbing for a total of an astonishing 42 years was devote a labor of love to making the grounds of both Harrison High School and North look amazing. This labor of love combines striving for a high standard to ensure that all the grounds he takes care of are well-groomed, and he prided himself on making sure that his fields popped in terms of their presentation, no matter the sport. He knew that this was one of the first things people would see and experience in our district, and if he could make those shine, he could make it opening and inviting for people. And that was him taking his job to a level that really impacted students and staff and was powerful over that time. He always felt that the field should wow people, like when he mowed the checkerboard pattern in the end zone at Harrison High School for the state playoffs. You know, some people in the groundskeeping world talk more about the mowing than the football, but they celebrate both. The rest of the world remembers the football. There's a lot of people that remember, "How do you get that checkerboard?" Even though this was a job, in talking to Joe, he shared with me it really was a career and a labor of love, taking care of Harrison and North, as they became his home away from home. And I can't thank Joe enough for all he's given to our two schools in our district. And I really am sad to see him go, and I wish him all the best in his retirement, because that labor of love was a lot of work, and he deserves a second childhood to rest, relax, and have some fun. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Thank you. He may have a good lawn consulting business, teaching all of us how to do checkerboards and cross patterns. I think you could have a gig, Joe. Now, it is my distinct honor and pleasure to recognize an absolutely amazing teacher and gardener of human potential, Mrs. Christina Pittman. Christina has taught for 27 years, 25 of which have been in FPS at both Harrison and North Farmington. In those years, Christina has proven herself to be a dedicated and gifted master teacher, serving in more capacities than I can even imagine, as she listed the things she was proud of, as an AP reader, regionally and nationally for AP English exams, and AP English literature, oh, sorry, as well for AP English literature, and the AP seminar exam. So she took time out of her day to grade all of the students' essays and be part of the national grading for every student in the country that took these exams. On top of that, she's been a district facilitator, a teaching and learning committee member, a mentor teacher for educators leading the profession, an instructional coach at Harrison High School, a reading apprenticeship PD facilitator who brought reading apprenticeship in a strong way to North and really, both buildings actually, and really, really changed how students engage with material in so many powerful ways. She also was a teacher consultant for the National Writing Project, a district lead for the Curriculum Writing Committee, and she developed and shared with a team of her teachers a very powerful model for teaching AP Lit and AP Lang that, this is unbelievable, has led to half of both our junior and senior classes taking both AP Lit and AP Lang for each of the past four years. That's 300 students a year taking AP English, time and again. That is not typically the case, nor the class everybody is super excited for. It is difficult, right? But as a result of the student-centered, thought-provoking model, she helps students learn to make meaning out of whatever they encounter, whether it's a book, a piece of audio, a human being in front of them. And she helps them organize all of that, and their thinking and their voice to create and communicate meaningfully in both spoken and written word about what they encounter. And the real fruit of this is that when they come back from college, they tell every student to take these courses, because Pittman, Rust, and Hughes, that team she created, will get you ready for anything you need to read and write in career, college, or life. Christina, thank you for making each of us and your students better off as a result of our interactions with you. We wish you all the best as you enter this next phase of your life, and I just can't thank you enough for everything you've done for all the people you've encountered in our district. So thank you very much. And it is now my pleasure to invite Mr. Christopher O'Brien to honor our central office retirees.
Good evening. It is my honor to introduce Ms. Nanoska Wiltsi, who has been a wonderful advocate for students in her 30 years in public education. She's taught 28 years in Farmington in the United States and two years in Honduras. So she's got a very unique background. She started Eastern, I was going to say Eastern Michigan, it's East Middle School, isn't it? Not Eastern Michigan. Beachview Elementary, and she's taught science, social studies, and her passion, EL, and the Newcomers. Four really qualities came up to me when I thought about Nanoska. She's reflective, she's hardworking, she's dedicated, and she has integrity. I have never met anybody who works as hard as she does. And when she works hard, she always reflects on, is it good enough? Her sole purpose is making sure it's good enough for our students. She has integrity, she's always focused on her job, and she pushes me to be better. When I don't do what I'm supposed to do, she will push me on it, and I love her for it. She is a true, I'm going to lose it. She's a true advocate for students and for their families. She herself was an EL learner, so she knows about their challenges and their struggles. And every time we had a conversation, it was always focused on what's best for kids. Nanoska, you will be, will not be able to be replaced. Thank you for all you've done for Farmington, for the students, for the staff, and for the community, and for me. Thank you, I love you, and I'm going to miss you greatly. And now let me introduce Ms. Margaret Hendrickson, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
She and I will have some moments where I share, from the deep center of my soul and my heart, everything I feel for her today. Kathy Oh, we call her, although her real name's Kathy Ohlenzick, has been with Farmington Public Schools for 26 years. I thought I was going to get through this. She has served as a loved elementary teacher, a respected instructional coach, and an impactful elementary literacy and social studies coordinator. In this role, it's really important to notice the impact she has had in the last three years in this role. You led with credibility as an intentional leader as you shifted our K-5 literacy program over the last three years. In this work, you thoughtfully moved our collective practice in order to impact each and every learner. Kathy, you are an expert in your craft and unmatched in your expertise. From some of the simple communication writing, which isn't so simple, to facilitating adult learners in work groups and professional development, sometimes in even harder tasks. Adults are not always the best students, being included. Creating action plans, you think about the nuts and bolts of the work, as well as the big picture, while also keeping the people, the humans, the young, and us, a little bit older, in mind. You understood and still understand how to invest in teachers in order to invest in our students. You are trusted by teachers and building leaders. You are cherished by the Instructional Services Department. You are an exemplar of FPS's present and the future. For thanking you, I thank you for taking us there. This is all I and we could have ever asked for you. Personally and professionally, you've been an ongoing thought partner for me. I've grown in my literacy geekness. We will miss you, and from day forward, we will always ask ourselves, "What would Kathy do?" Thank you for all your years of service and impact. This has been a momentous shift in our organization in a very short period of time.
I want to thank the School Community Relations Department for this wonderful evening, the help and assistance from the entire Human Resources Department, and also very special thanks to our principals. This is a busy month in all of your schools. Thank you so much for being here, speaking about these beautiful educators, your well-articulated words that mean so much to us. Board of Education President Weems, thanks for the opportunity to have this recognition tonight. I'll turn the program back over to you.
Time's on.
Time's on.
Time's on.
Time's on.
Time's on.
How's life treating?
Like a biggie dozen diapers.
Changing, man, changing. Just changing.
Wow.
Just, just changing.
Never heard that one before. I feel you, man.
Just changing.
Just changing.
I'm not stealing that one, though. You may feel what I was getting, but I'm telling you now.
Thank you for allowing us that recess. We will now get back to our board meeting. Thank you very much. We will now move to items from the President. The first thing we need to do is approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
I got it.
Approve the...
I move that the Board of Education approve the May 20, 2025 regular meeting agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made to approve the agenda by Dr. Turner, supported by Ms. Walker. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. Moving on now to announcements, just a few from me. I wanted to take a moment to congratulate some of our music students and arts students. With respect to theater, a few of our students proudly represented North Farmington at the 2025 Sutter Foster Awards on May 18th. We had our orchestra and band receive outstanding ratings at a district band and orchestra festival. Both our choirs, the Concert Choir and the Magical Choir, earned excellent ratings at the District Oral Festival, and there were some solo and ensemble outstanding nominations as well. I continue to believe we have a wonderful music department. I was able to attend their latest choir performance, I think it was last week, and coming off of a New York trip to see several musicals featuring Wicked. The theme of the performance was, I think it was "For the Good", and some of these students were just amazing. The solo performances were great. There was a duo, I think her name is Sydney Armwood and Samantha Jones. They just did a wonderful job of singing, which one was it? "Loathing" from Wicked. And the performance, I mean, their voices are beautiful. The harmony was fantastic, but what was even better was they were really into it. And I think they're best friends, which made it even better. And they were all dressed in one in like green and one in pink. They were just awesome. I can go on and on about them. Seniors will be missing them. I also wanted to lift up red carpet students from Lanigan. I had a great opportunity yesterday to go to Lanigan, where I learned more about their speaking after-school program, where they give kids the power of voice. And these kids really did a wonderful job. Elementary students presenting well, introducing themselves. And I was really pleased that they were recognized by our governor, our lieutenant governor. Our mayor of Farmington Hills was in attendance as well to congratulate them, along with the county commissioner and myself. And I just thought it was really great to see those kids get recognized. I also attended last week our community dialogue on the 13th, where we spoke about student achievement. I know we'll get a report out from that. A couple of things sort of stood out for me. One, with respect to our need to really focus on advanced learners and make sure that we have an opportunity to grow everyone, including those who need a little bit more accelerated learning. And parents want us also to focus on soft skills. So I'm really pleased that we're already moving in that direction with our profile of a lifelong learner. I am really happy that the work that we're doing, I felt validated with some of the work that we're already doing. I want to lift up the Golden Apple Awards on Thursday. I'm looking forward to acknowledging staff who have been nominated. I think about 37 staff were nominated. I know that we're moving into the end of the year. Some of our seniors have, I call it senioritis. Especially next week will be the last day of school for some of our seniors and some clapouts. It's today?
This week.
This week?
It's Thursday.
Oh, my gosh, is it? Oh, wow. That's exciting.
Like, don't extend it.
Yeah. So enjoy all of the clapouts for those of you, us two, who have seniors, three of us on the board. So that's always an exciting time. Honors ceremonies coming up and recognizing so many of our students who've received scholarships. I want to thank Mrs. Heinrich for offering a scholarship to our students. I've also offered one. I think we both had over 67 applicants to the scholarships. So that was always wonderful. And thank you to Thomas Hall for helping and Angie Smith for helping with some of the evaluation process. So we were all pretty consistent, so that's pretty good. Yeah, but I had to exclude my daughter. She's getting a full ride, by the way, on the Weems, so she's going to need discussion. All right. I think that ends it for announcements. We will now move on to public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to make public comment, now is the time. You have three minutes. We ask that if you do have public comment, that you refrain, oh, thank you, from naming anyone where anonymity would be more appropriate. Our first and only right now public comment is Mr. Lubaway. If you want to come up to the podium, you have three minutes. And again, if anyone else is interested, the comment cards are located at the back of the room. We ask that you fill it out and bring it to the ceramic bowl that is at the end of this table. There will be another opportunity for public comment. You have one opportunity to make public comment, but you can make it at either time, either now or after we have our discussion items. Sir, you have three minutes.
Okay, I have two topics tonight. First, board vacancy selection. It will be reasonable to select a mid-highest vote getter in November, who fell only one half of 1% behind. 281 votes.
Votes out of 58,000. T.R. Carr. Second, the board vacancy application asked, how would you work to build a positive, oops, what are your thoughts on diversity, equity, and inclusion? I said, as DEI, as enumerated in the board's proclamation, is morally ambiguous. It segregates us. For example, Martin Luther King's statement fails DEI theory. I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. The proclamation segregates us. Recently, I wrote the board, Jason Riley of the Wall Street Journal, wrote a thoughtful article that concludes, "History shows that Black people have made greater strides under policies of colorblindness than affirmative action." If you agree with Riley, that wipes out the major premise underlying the board's anti-racist proclamation. Then I asked if the proclamation is still in effect. The board president ducked the question, saying, "I don't know what you mean by, is the proclamation in effect?" However, if you are referring to whether the board remains committed to ensuring all students feel welcome and included, yes. No. I'm asking if the board still pushes DEI and risks losing federal money. Is the proclamation still in effect? I've asked this before, and apparently the answer is yes. This isn't the time to rebel.
Thank you. Are there any other folks who would like to make public comment? I'm going to take a little bit of privilege here. I fail to make one more announcement. I want to acknowledge to the public that we have received applications for the board vacancy. I wanted to make sure that I said that. I forgot. I apologize. We will continue to go through this process. We now have to schedule interviews. You all are aware. So the public knows we've received 16 applications. We are very happy with such a robust pool. We will work over the course of the next couple of weeks to schedule interviews for those 16 applicants. We will have those interviews scheduled over the next couple of weeks, and then we will make our decision. We don't know yet what that timeline will look like. We have to have a conversation with some of these applicants to find out what their availability is. We're currently assessing the availability of the board, and we'll determine whether we're able to conduct interviews over two or three or four days. That will all be outlined over the course of the next few weeks, so I wanted to make that announcement. I also want to acknowledge that I too have a dream. I would love to not be judged by the color of my skin. And I'm speaking for myself. We are not living in that time. I am still judged based on the color of my skin and based on my sex. I hope we get there one day. We are not there just yet. And with that, we will move on to items from the secretary.
Thank you. The board has received communications regarding a Wall Street Journal article on affirmative action, implementation of safe zone policy, IBCP and IBDP senior celebration. Thank you for teachers and staff appreciation. The FPS Farmington Public Schools Board vacancy office of head start notifications. The board acknowledges communication and responds when appropriate. A list of correspondence can be found in the board packet accessible on the Farmington Public Schools website. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to legislative update.
I apologize that I don't have an update for us this evening, but I will have a thorough update at our next board meeting.
Thank you very much. Moving on to district updates. Dr. Coffin?
Thank you, President Weems. It was so great to see all of our retirees and recognize them this evening. Throughout their careers, they've demonstrated passion for education, going above and beyond to ensure that every one of our students feels valued and supported. And their efforts have really fostered a learning environment where all students can thrive, and we know that their impact's going to resonate for years to come. This week, our seniors do wrap up their time here with us at FPS. To the class of 2025, congratulations on wrapping up this significant milestone in your educational journey. Your hard work, your determination, and resilience have brought you to this moment, and we are just so proud of each and every one of you. As we look forward to the upcoming graduation ceremonies, we're excited to celebrate their achievements and the bright futures that lie ahead for all of them. In addition to the celebrations that have been taking place, the last few weeks have also been filled with excitement as several administrators have spent time focusing on reimagining the learning experiences for our students. A few of us had the opportunity to attend the Future of Learning Council Summit in Lansing, where we heard from Greg Baer, the executive director of the Graeble Foundation, co-founder of Remake Learning, and also the co-author of the book, I know we've discussed here at the board table, "When You Wonder Your Learning: Mr. Rogers' Enduring Lessons for Raising Creative, Curious, and Caring Kids." We also attended sessions on artificial intelligence, along with capturing our journey to a more competency-based approach to teaching and learning. Our high school principals and central office staff traveled to Anchor Bay High School, just about an hour down the road, to learn more about their career pathways and ways that students are given the space to understand and own their own learning progressions. Finally, our strategic planning leaders met just yesterday to wrap up another amazing year of our work with our staff, students, and community, and moving one more year closer to reaching our goals. The group also brainstormed new ideas and opportunities as we enter the third year of our current strategic plan. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Move on to the IB president.
So next, I'd like to invite Mr. Tim Russell and his IB students to the podium. Tim is our IB coordinator, and they're going to provide an update on the IB program here for Farmington Public Schools.
Thank you very much for inviting us out tonight. Very appreciative. I do know that I don't want to spend a ton of time talking myself because I brought four members of our executive board. We started our inaugural IB Student Leadership Group this year, and these gentlemen stepped up and became part of our executive board. We have a member of next year's executive board with us as well. So a few things that I wanted to say about the program over this year. We're very proud of what we've accomplished in just a year's time. We have really seen some excitement and growth about the program. A lot of what we've been focused on is making it palatable to do challenging work. And one of the issues, one of the biggest issues that we have is that it is socially acceptable to say, "Why don't you take easier classes?" And the IB students clearly are not taking necessarily easier classes. So one of our main jobs has been to try to make it more fun while it's also more challenging, because I don't want them to feel like they're missing out. And these gentlemen have been key to making sure that that's part of what we've accomplished this year. So as I said, I want to let them do most of the talking. So first, I'll introduce Tanziel. Have a few things you want to say?
Yeah, okay. Hello, Board of Education. I just want to say that I believe that the IB program at Farmington High School is like a hidden gem of the district. It has opened so many doors for me. It is such an, it's an unknown program, but it brings so much benefits to the students. Like, people, they avoid the program because they feel it's too hard, but I feel like that's not, that shouldn't be the way we look at it. It is a hard, it's a rigorous program, but I feel like we should enjoy the difficulty and learn from it, rather than avoid it. And I've just had, I've had so much fun in this program, meeting all, like, making new friends, meeting all these great teachers. And I also believe that the IB program at Farmington High School is unique. And it's unique because its staff is very supportive. They love teaching their students. The students love being taught by these teachers. And I see online, when I talk to IB students online, they feel, at their IB programs across the world, that they feel that the teachers don't support them enough. And so then they blame the program when actually there might be other problems. At Farmington High School, our teachers are very supportive of it, and IB program here is great.
Thank you. Brandon Dale?
Hello, Board of Education. Similar to what Tanziel said, I honestly feel that the IB program, the diploma program specifically, kind of prepares you in a way unlike any other. As he said, the program is grueling, especially when you have your exams coming up. You have IAs, which are internal assessments, and you have college applications as well. It is grueling, but as you said, I think you really should enjoy the difficulty. I feel like similar, or in comparison to AP or other honor classes, IB prepares you in a way that's multifaceted and is unlike any other. For instance, it taught me the principles of time management, really trying to get my time and organize my time, which a lot of students may have trouble with switching to college, where you don't, where you have a lot more freedom and less responsibilities, honestly. So I feel that that, as well as my critical thinking, has improved greatly. But also, I think the biggest benefit is my writing. As I said, in that period with the internal assessments and my college applications would include a lot of essays, I really had, I had to write a lot. I wrote for several hours on end almost every day. But I feel like coming out of that, my writing improved so much better. I'm really able to prepare myself for the research papers and the other essays that I have in college. And I really feel that the transition between high school and college is so much easier because of the program, which other students may not be able to say the same if they don't take it.
Andy Haldita?
Hi. So yeah, I agree with everything they said, and you feel the effects of IB firsthand. I wanted to talk more so about like the environment that we have at IB with like our IB students. A lot of camaraderie, but also you see that this environment is full of like highly ambitious people. Like, they want more out of their education, out of their careers, and out of life. They want more. And again, like, our teachers and our coordinators, they do a great job of kind of facilitating that level of learning through IB. Also, for me personally, academically, it is rigorous. It is difficult. And outside of just like how I've benefited academically, it's been more so for me, my personal growth. So again, like, skills like time management, being organized, things like that. Honestly, I see a lot more benefit in those skills on top of like academics. But I've had a lot of experience with like other honors classes, AP classes. They're good, but you don't get these sort of like skills that you would, that you would otherwise have access to through IB. So, yeah.
Finally, Brayden Shea?
Hello. As Andy said, the learning style for IB is very different from other classes. I guess an easy example for me in this case would be IB History versus AP History. I'm not trying to knock AP History. It obviously has its own benefits. AP History, you blow through material, test every two weeks. IB History, we start with World War II, but we didn't start, you know, when Germany invaded Poland. We started back in 1914. We learned the, what caused it, we learned the effects of it, all the little diplomatic things, and you really learned how to be a historian. And that's something I think that IB really does. Brandon touched on critical thinking. IB does an incredible job of hammering that in. Andy touched on his writing skills. And like freshman year, I look back on those essays, I'm like, I look back and I say, "What was I doing?" But now, like, IB History, we went into the IB History exam. You have to write several essays. And now, as IB seniors, we can go in and, over the course of two hours, write a complete, coherent, well-organized, well-structured essay. To me, that has really helped prepare me for college and anything that life will bring. And I'm honestly just very grateful to have this opportunity and to have such an amazing program in our district. Thank you.
And I want to end it with, people talk about how rigorous it is and how challenging it is. Our current seniors average 4.3 GPA. That's the average GPA of our seniors. This is my starting goalkeeper. We have multiple clubs, multiple accomplishments besides IB that they've gone through. So the thing that scares kids away is that, "Oh, I don't want my GPA to be hurt." We support you throughout the process. It's rigorous, but we don't make grades impossible. You're prepared for college, and that's our, that's our job. That and making it fun. Thank you.
I would love to, yeah, I'm sorry. So...
So first, to the students who came up here today, thank you for coming and sharing with us. Everything that you mentioned to us, we know. But it's really, really helpful as a reminder to, to hear from you, to, to learn from you. And for me, what I got today was, we need to do more of this. We need to help and encourage more students to have the experience that you have. We talked just earlier today about more accelerated opportunities for our learners. This is it. And I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to bring that down into the middle schools and the elementary schools as well. We're so proud of you. You guys are doing an amazing job. You already know that this is a great program for you. I appreciate that you're pushing yourself, that you're not taking the easy route. I want you to encourage your friends to do the same. I look forward to hearing from you when you come back to us after you graduate for your IB graduation and when you get your IB diploma. Everyone that we've ever talked to at those graduations says the same thing that you're saying right now, that it was a great program. But what you're going to realize when you go off to college is that it's going to be easier for you. That's what they all tell us, that their first year of college was easier than the high school experience. And so you guys are well on your way. Congratulations. We're very proud of you. I'm sorry.
No worries.
Not you. I'll come back.
Gentlemen, just wanted to congratulate you on, on the work that you've done. And clearly, as a part of IB, maybe one of the unseen benefits is your ability to present and express yourself publicly. You did a masterful job. You, you, you tag teamed like you were in a relay race, beautifully handing off the baton. It was exceptional to watch. And the enjoy the difficulty, did I say that correctly? You need to make that a T-shirt, seriously. And that needs to be promoted and walked around the school. Everybody wants to be a part of something, and you promoting it in that fashion, I bet you, you will pull more into IB just on that enjoy the difficulty and talking about that conceptually. I think that is absolutely phenomenal. Do not trademark it because I am stealing it.
Trademark it quickly.
Mr. Hull, and then Dr. Turner, and then Mrs. Heimrich. Oh, yep. Everybody.
I am so, so proud of you guys because through, through FAP, and I remember you guys coming and helping out, and I remember you, when you guys started, and to see how you guys actually, you know, y'all went through it, and you guys are high, high achieving. When you say achieve the impossible dream, you make it so much more, you make it just more believable in that you place some kids who feel that they couldn't have the success you are to be there because you are there. And, you know, I, I really appreciate you guys. Be an example, be a motivator. I love the quotes like, like soon-to-be doctor, Dr. Walker said, that, you know, enjoy the difficulty. That, that to me spoke out a lot. A lot of people say, no, it's just so hard, but enjoy it. That's part of the, that, that enjoy the process of just doing it. Also, the time management, I wrote down notes, because I love your quotes. Time, a lot of things are out of whack. So for you guys to say, hey, I have time management now, so I'm able to juggle a thousand things and personal things in your life, that's awesome. To learn that skill as a young adult, that is, that's a very invaluable tool. The highly ambitious, for highly ambitious people, I love that quote because what you have did was you put another standard there that's okay to be ambitious. It's okay to want more. And, and this actually helps you with that, with that drive to keep going, going, and that is awesome. And lastly would be the, you know, like Mr. Shea was saying, be a historian. You know, you're just, you're just not learning by history, but now you're a historian. Now, that's a different perspective than you're just learning, okay, this is World War II dated 1914 to 1944, 45. You're a historian, so don't quote me. But, but it, it tells you that in depth, learning that you have, that you can actually do it. And you're, you know, just be that, continue to be great, inspire people, grab ment, you know, be a mentor, grab, and grab mentors as you go along in life and just move it along. And I'm proud of you guys.
An attempt not to be redundant in terms of what you've heard from my colleagues already. I'm just going to hit on a couple of things. I know one is an architect, two is studying medicine, one is studying high finance, correct? That's where you're going, right? And so it would be a disservice if we didn't talk about the presentation that we didn't get a chance to see because there's some baby pictures in there, these young men, which demonstrates their humility, you know, in terms of what they present and how they present themselves. So kudos to that. I can see them, the folks haven't seen, but page six, I'm moving through these. These are great baby pictures. You all should definitely present those because it also shows another side to you all. Kudos to you all. Keep going. Please come back and tell the stories. Keep pushing the IB program because obviously what we're seeing in front of us is a demonstration of what it can do in a very short period of time if you open the minds of these young folks.
Yeah, and I just want to really compliment you on your presentation. As my colleagues have already said, I'm just sitting there thinking, young people speaking to, you know, a group of adults is sometimes difficult. But I heard you say rigorous and hard, and students are sometimes scared away. And I really applaud you for saying rigorous and hard is not something that you should be afraid of. And I really want to applaud the staff, Mr. Russell and our staff, because knowing that the teachers are there to support you and help you in the learning, this is what we're all here for. And I think our young people need to hear more of that. Just because something is rigorous doesn't mean it's not achievable. And with the right support and the right tools and the right work ethic, anything is possible. So thank you for being our role models and our leaders and sharing, sharing that message with our, our student body.
These are difficult times in the world. And it is very encouraging knowing that you are our future. With your critical thinking and your time management and your ability to connect and be articulate with an adult audience, you are the future that give me hope that humanity's going to be okay. And I'm so glad that you are in the world, doing what you are, are doing, being who you are, and embracing and enjoying the difficulty. Good luck in your future endeavors, and we look forward to celebrating you not only in the upcoming graduation, but again, when you come back next December for your IB graduation.
I do want to remind you, you're invited to come to the celebration in a couple, a couple of nights Thursday. We're having our IBCP, IBDP senior celebrations. So we want to celebrate the fact that they've done a hard job and they've done it well.
Thank you so much. We will now move to reports from board committees. And let's start with the Community Engagement Committee, and then we'll move to the Finance Committee. Could you do the Finance Committee first because I have to find my notes? Sure. Finance Committee, and then when, when you get ready, we'll do the Community Engagement Committee, and then we'll do Policy.
Okay. Okay, so the Finance Committee met on May 16th. President Weems and Trustee Hull and myself were present. We talked about the pizza bid, which is a discussion item. Just a couple of the highlights that the discussion, the, the Food Services Department is going to recommend a one-year bid with the option to extend beyond, which was good. The bid is going to be for the whole district. While currently, we only have pizza days in the middle school and high school, we'll have the option to expand it throughout the whole district. And there were two vendors that are being recommended, and they're going to alternate between the buildings. So one building isn't always going to get one type and the other so that the students will be able to have choice in that, in that. And the recommendations balanced nutrition standards and student preference, which I think was a good thing. I was disappointed that I wasn't able to attend the taste testing, although I heard that it was a lot of eating. So Hillside Serving Lines were discussed, and that is going to be a discussion item also. And so basically, they saw a need for two servings lines at Hillside Elementary School. And currently, they have one of the lines, the hot food units. The walls aren't working properly, and so there's some challenges. And so this is going to be the last upgrade as far as all of our serving lines throughout the district, and that is up for discussion. We'll have more information. And the third thing we talked about and asked questions out of time was the music uniforms for the tuxedos and dresses for the choir, band, and orchestra students. And this is going to be for our two high schools, Farmington High School and North Farmington High School. And one of the things we asked about is why are there different styles for the girls' dresses? It seemed like it'd be more efficient for everybody in the district to wear the same dress. But they pointed out when they go to competitions that it differentiates the schools. And the, the leaders in the school district, the band and orchestral teachers, do a really good job of estimating the different types of sizes and things that they have. And this is something that's long overdue, so that is also up for a discussion item. We'll have more details. And that was it for our Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Heimrich. Are you prepared? Yes, I am. I, I had a little mishap with my laptop last week. It sort of caught fire a little. And, well, the battery wasn't charging, so I took it to be repaired. And when the repairman opened it up to put in a new battery, there were some sparks and a little bit of fire, not a lot. So I, I have, I have a brand-new laptop, but it's not working yet. So I'm sorry, I had to get my notes on my... Anyway, we had a really robust discussion at our community dialogue. Everyone stayed for an extra half hour past the eight o'clock stopping time. I mean, nobody even like made, looked at the clock or made a move to get up. It was really, really a deep and powerful conversation. One of the big takeaways was around our need as a district to do a better job of telling our story and highlighting all of the amazing things we are doing. There were some fabulous ideas around ways to better include our parents in what's going on. We have a lot of things that we put out, online emails and things. We had a lot of conversation around, are those really reaching our parents who, like us, have busy lives? And so just because we put it out there doesn't mean that it, it's being read. So there was some talk about parent ambassadors, leveraging school PTAs, leveraging some of the parent groups that sort of organically already exist. For example, with some of our sports teams, our theater parents, band, and other groups that we already have where parents are, are likely to hang out together. And also, maybe having some kind of new parent mentorship for families who are new in our district. We talked about NWA data and how parents mentioned that although they get to see their own kids' scores, they would like some broader context around how their own child's scores fit in with the broader context of how our other Farmington students are doing, and then how Farmington is doing with regards to other students elsewhere. We did talk about some of the things we are currently working on, like the dashboard, that will share some of that contextual information, that broader information with our, with our parent community. We talked about how do we more fully engage our parents to better support their child's learning outside of school. Parent literacy essentials, for example. We talked about the way that we are using teams in our schools at all levels to allow for more flexibility in how students are organized and the teachers working together to meet, to meet the various differentiated student needs. We did also talk about, as Ms. Weems pointed out, making sure that we meet the needs of students who are ready for acceleration. I know Dr. Coffin took reams and reams of notes. And so these, these community dialogues do have concrete impact. We are listening. We are taking the information, the questions, the concerns, the ideas, and bringing them back to the district. Dr. Coffin and, and her team are then taking those ideas and, and going to work to building bridges between what the community is asking for and what we're trying to share with the community because sometimes there's a disconnect. And so it was, it was a wonderful evening, and I'm so grateful to those who participated. Thank you. Mr. Walker.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to Dr. Turner for chairing the Policy Committee during my absence. I really appreciate you keeping that chair warm for me. Thank you very much. And most recently, to you, President Weems, for leading our last meeting as well as I made my transition back. So with that being said, the meeting was called to order at 4:01. Those that were present were President Weems, myself, and Trustee Smith, along with Dr. Coffin, Brad Paddock, Allison Robinson, and Greg Smith, as well as Colleen Scripture as well. Three items were on our agenda for that particular meeting. HR Policies, Positive Culture Handbook, and the Miller Johnson Policy Manual Update. Regarding the HR policies, it was, we had a discussion around the community members recently raised concerns about transparency and consistency of our hiring practices, particularly related to job postings and decision-making. And in response to that, the Board of Education conducted a thorough review of our HR policies, consulted with an agent, with the HR Director, and considered input from a board member with expertise in human resources. And the review confirmed that FPS has adhered to all established policies with no violations or inconsistencies identified. President Weems also spoke directly with the HR Director, who affirmed that our practices are consistent with legal standards and HR's best practices. With respect to the Positive Culture Handbook, the Positive Culture Handbook was reviewed to better align with district policies, with, better align district policies with our values of equity, clarity, and consistency. Prompted by concerns about inconsistencies and outcomes, the process involved input from educators, administrators, and restorative practice experts. Key updates include clearer language, standardized data protocols, and equity-focused revisions. Our next steps will be to gather more feedback, continue to do that, finalize edits, and begin staff training with ongoing evaluation to ensure lasting improvement. The Positive Culture Handbook will remain on our agenda until such a time as we're ready to execute. And then lastly, with respect to the Miller Johnson Policy Manual Update, the discussion about the positive, with respect to those updates, it's been tabled for another meeting later on in the fall. Okay. And that is all we have. Thank you.
Thank you, committee chairs. We will now move to discussion items. The first item is the review of nutrition, the pizza bid. So I'd like to welcome up Ms. Angie Davis. She'll actually be doing the Nutrition Services Pizza Bid, as well as the Hillside Serving Lines. That, you had a little bit of a preview from the updated, the report, so. No pizza with her.
No pizza now.
We ate it all. No, but yeah, you didn't, you weren't there.
Just checking.
There were, how many pizzas were there?
Oh, there was seven.
Seven, yes, seven.
Seven full-size slices, like.
Damn, missed it.
It was good. Some, some of it was.
Some other wasn't.
You didn't know the results.
Oh, I can tell you later.
Okay.
I won't mention them over. But April 21st, we accepted bids for the 25, 26 school year. We had four vendors, Catagen, Domino's, Jets Pizza, and Little Caesar's submit bids. We requested them to provide pricing for both white crust and whole grain crust for the school requirements. Their pricing ranged from 88 cents per slice to a dollar two. All four companies submitted a price for the white, but only three companies submitted for the whole grain. The bid was structured to meet the federal nutrition guidelines while ensuring the product meets the students' preferences and supports the success of the school nutrition program. The blind taste test was done last week on May 13th at North Farmington. We had a group of about 15 students evaluate the pizza on appearance and taste, and we had four board members, a few administrators. It was our best turnout yet for the taste test. I think everyone's been waiting for that day for a few years. I think the last one was probably six years ago. Based on, on the blind taste test, the students, like I said, rated everything. There was a few of them I had to toss out. The way they rated didn't really make sense. It was opposite of what they said. So overall, Jets Pizza, which would be a new vendor, was a deep-dish pizza, came in- was a deep-dish pizza, came in first place, which is also the most expensive. And then second was Little Caesar's, but their whole grain crust beat their white crust, which was really, really good. The whole grain crust has come a long ways. You don't really notice a difference, and obviously, they did not know. Little Caesar's comes out to be 91 cents per slice, and Jets Pizza is $1.02 per slice. Little Caesar's has been a longstanding vendor with us, consistently giving us a positive performance. And this would be the first year that we would be working with Jets Pizza. So we are recommending to award to both companies, and we'll kind of split. It will be a bid for the whole district. So if we want to bring pizza in K through 12, like we did prior to COVID, we could. We're looking, some of the feedback was, while they loved the Jets Pizza, it was a lot. They couldn't imagine eating it every week, because it was that deep-dish style. So we're thinking of alternating every other week. So if North has Jots, then Farmington High could have Little Caesar's and the next week alternate. So it would rotate. So that's what we're looking at doing. Any questions?
No questions. A couple pieces of feedback. First, thank you for inviting the board to do that taste test. I think those of us who were able to come, and many of us, most of us, were able to come, really appreciated that. I love the fact that the students had an opportunity to participate here in what they're going to be eating for lunch. I think all of that is great. We always appreciate student voice. I love the idea of alternating. I recall in the past that we had some issues, maybe with volume, and maybe one vendor not being able to service all of our schools. This came up in the committee meeting. But if you could, for the public, you just mentioned that this would be an option for K through 12. Is that the plan, or we're still considering whether this is going to be available?
I think what we would need to do is do some trial runs in the elementary, because our meal count has increased drastically since COVID, with all the kids eating free meals. I'm a little concerned getting them through the line quick enough. So I think if we do some pilots in the school, kind of see where we're at, and that's where we can judge from there. The pizza companies are willing, you know, to add on, you know, additional ordering days more schools. So that won't be the problem or anything. It's just making sure that they're about, I think they only get like 25 minutes to eat. It's less than the high schools. So getting them through the serving lines quick enough and to eat a meal is a challenge.
Thank you. I think food is extremely important to our students. They've come and talked to us about it. So thank you for coming to talk to us about it. We look forward to when this comes back. Thank you.
Side serving lines.
Yeah, so we, Hillside Elementary is the very last school to be renovated for the serving lines. In the 12 years I've been here, we've been renovating every serving line. This will consist of a double line, which will be the hot wells, where the hot food will come from, a fruit and vegetable cold bar, serving counters, and a cashier station. It will look a little bit different than what we have there, but it will be more efficient for the students and the staff. Pricing for this equipment was obtained through an existing consortium bid through Oakland Schools. The vendor awarded the bid is Stafford Smith, and this company has a proven track record with us for excellent service. The total price for the new serving line is $75,630, and that's for it to be delivered and removal of our existing equipment. The quote will be valid through June 13th to go through our next board meeting. If approved, the equipment will be delivered in the fall. I'm expecting about the end of September. And it will be fully funded through the Nutrition Services Department. It is important to note, this is the final lunch serving line to be replaced in the district. All the other school serving lines have been replaced over the 12 years, but it's part of our long term to modernize the food service equipment. So even though this is the last serving line, we will still be updating as we go. I just got back from a trade show. We were looking at conveyor pizza ovens, you know, possibly in-house. So we're always looking for something new. And again, this will be paid for out of the Nutrition Services Fund.
Any questions? Mr. Walker?
Just a quick question. You note that the equipment, if approved, will be delivered in the fall. What's the timeline for it all to be installed and then for students to be able to utilize it? Isn't it a difficult process? Is it lengthy?
No, no. We've done this many times while we're operating. We may have the old equipment ready disconnected, so the company comes in, removes it, they put this in place. We can serve off it. We may not have the electrical, but we can work with the timeframes. And then the electrical and the plumbers will be about probably like a two-day. So it's really not that big of a deal. But, you know, the kids don't really notice.
I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, thank you for that presentation. We will also look for this to come back to at our next meeting. We want to move on?
Sure. And next, I'd like to welcome up Ms. Margaret Hendrickson and Mr. Jacob Trains. They're going to share information on the FPS music uniform request. And while they're up there, we can pass around a couple of the options.
I should have had you guys put them on before the meeting, so you could model them. So, good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Kelly Coffin. As you can see, we are here, kind of once again, ensuring that we have updated attire or uniforms for our music programs here in Farmington Public Schools that we're very proud of. We have a longstanding music program. We spoke previously about our marching band with rain jackets. And here, we're talking about choir, orchestra, and concert band. Our students start their music career in early elementary in generic music, and we have significant exploration and specialization of their talents as they enter middle school and then high school. We have over 600 students that participate in our concert programs, and we're currently growing, as we now have some music expectations at the sixth grade to ensure everyone has an opportunity to touch, feel the power of music. So we're very excited about the countless ratings and awards that our students get at festivals and contests. The music department approached me about the age of their attire uniforms, similar to the rain jackets. We are at a place where it was early 2000s was the last time that we did this type of purchase. And so we have tuxedos and dresses. And we are, the vendor we reached out to is Duulen Brothers &amp; Company, who is a consortium contractor. So we get consortium pricing. These are the images of what you see in hand for the different dresses and tuxedos. As you did note, Ms. Heinrich, is that FHS and North Farmington dresses are of a little different style, as we think about the identity of those programs, as well as when they are in competition together, although the tuxedo is the same. And so the cost of the total value is $78,430, again, consortium pricing. If you wouldn't mind, as you gathered the information about quantities, in general, what was that process? How did you guys think about how much to order?
So, thank you for having us. I really appreciate, like, all the support that you've given to the fine arts in the whole district. We really, really appreciate it. So obviously, we, you can see a huge difference between the two size quantities, between North Farmington and Farmington High School. Not necessarily just like one's better than the other. It's more along the lines of even before the sixth-grade requirement has hit the high school level, yet they're still in like the seventh grade right now. My program alone, for example, I came here three years ago. My program was at 68 kids throughout three orchestras. This next year, I'm looking at 138 in just that three years. And that's before the sixth grade actually hits. And that's just at Farmington High School. And North, again, is also getting an influx of kids as well, but just not at the level of Farmington is. We're going to be looking at this 600 number you saw earlier today with like all the high schools. That's going to be 600 just Farmington in the next year or two, most likely. So that's going to be, that's the biggest thing we saw during this whole thing. So really, really excited about that. So good problems to have.
Yes. So they did a lot of meticulous conversations with their boosters, parents, and students about thinking what sizes, how many sizes, to make sure we had enough for all of our students at both programs. There are some attire specifications that we included in the PowerPoint, and you've been able to see them firsthand, what they feel like. And so we do have a quote for North Farmington and Farmington High School. The difference in pricing, it does have to do with their current enrollments and the current size of their programs, which we do anticipate growing with the total value, again, of just over $78,000.
Are there any questions?
And I just thought of this one I didn't ask earlier. But if the program grows and we need more dresses before the life of them, are these styles that they'll continue to carry and we can add to the inventory?
Yeah, so we actually picked these styles just because this is what is the normal as of right now. So we're thinking in the next couple of years, even still, this will still be the norm. And the tuxedo that you actually saw, I do want to hit on this. It's not the actual tuxedo that you're seeing right now that's going to be the thing. We're going to actually have an all-blackout tux with a long tie as well. So it's more of an all-black kind of look, which a lot of schools and even professional groups are going to. The DSO is actually getting rid of their, like, tuxedo dressing, like, dressing, and it's going all black. That's actually just a recent thing. So we're trying to match DSO, because we are playing actually collegiate-level music as well.
I just think it's a good look. Drones and guitar.
Thank you very much. I love the music program. I think the kids are doing phenomenal. And I love the fact that it's been growing so much over the past few years. I think that is a really great community within itself. Those kids really do a good job of supporting each other. Thank you for the work that you do there.
Thank you. And thank you for coming here tonight. And it was a long night with retirements, but a good celebration. Someday, you'll be up here. So thank you, Jacob. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board of Ed.
Okay, I think we are now moving on to our second public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? I see one person moving up. You can go directly to the podium and give us your comment card later. Anyone else want to make public comment? I think you've heard the spiel. You have three minutes.
All righty. Well, the first thing I want to say is congratulations to all of my teachers who were here earlier tonight and are finally getting to retire. I have a long list of them, but just off the top of my head, Mr. Meesner, Mrs. Kim, Mrs. Goodlesky, Mrs. Swift, Mrs. Brinker. All of them have been really important parts of my life. So I'm super glad that they've been recognized tonight and that they're going to finally take a break, because they all work so hard. And then the other thing I want to talk about tonight is similar, but different. It's the seniors who are graduating from Farmington High School and the Farmington District, more specifically, the seniors graduating from HackBots. We have 10 that are going to be stepping away from the team this year, myself included. And every single one of those 10 people is going into a STEM field for college. We have engineers, computer science, computer engineering. I think there's game design in there. I, myself, am going into food science. So it's a really good group of people that we're unfortunately going to lose this year, but they're going on to really great stuff. So super big congratulations to all of those people. Today was senior signing day through first. So we were also recognized on the official first Instagram page, which we were proud of. And then the other thing, just in tangent with that, is kind of our last hurrah for those seniors is going to be this year at the Indiana Robotics Invitational, which is the, one of the most prestigious competitions that teams can participate in. It's the top 10% in the world that gets to compete at that. And the fact that we've been invited back for the second year in a row is really impressive to us. And kind of my main point with all of that is robotics is successful, and we're super proud of that, and we want that success to continue. But a lot of the difficulty with that is keeping kids motivated and interested with the team, which we've been discussing at our recent meetings, is becoming an issue for us. And the future depends heavily on our ability to keep kids interested in robotics, in STEM, in these opportunities in our community. So I know I mention all the time about pushing for those STEM spaces, but I think it also needs to be a discussion of how quickly can we get dirt moving?
Thank you so much. Thank you for your comments. Is there any further public comment? Seeing no further public comment, we will move on to action items. This first action item is, and only action item, is related to the calculus adoption. You'll recall that this item was presented at the regular board meeting held on May 6. Is there anyone who wants us to entertain a motion? Mr. Walker?
I move that the Board of Education approve the adoption of the recommended AP Calculus instructional resources as presented. The materials will be purchased from the BFW High School publishers at a total cost, including shipping and handling, of $36,662.22.
Support. Motion made by Mr. Walker, supported by Mrs. Heinrich, to approve the adoption of the recommended AP Calculus instructional resources in the amount totaling $36,662.22. Is there any discussion? May we have a roll call?
Dr. Blau?
Yes.
Mr. Hull?
Yes.
Ms. Heinrich?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
I, myself, yes, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We will now move on to items from the treasurer.
I move that the Board of Education approve the expenditures as outlined in the expenditure printout dated May 20th, 2025, as follows. General fund, $10,588,644. General fund athletics, $120,199. Capital projects, 2020 bond fund, $853,585. Nutrition services fund, $439,865. Benefits stabilization fund, $1,991,099, for a total of $13,993,392.
Support.
Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mr. Walker, to approve the expenditure report. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? Mrs. Heinrich?
I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. A, approval of minutes. May 6, 2025, regular meeting. May 13th, 2025, community dialogue. May 15th, 2025, Policy Board Governance Committee meeting. May 16th, 2025, Finance Facility Committee meeting. B, Head Start Director's Monthly Report. And C, personnel items.
Support.
Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Dr. Turner, to approve the consent agenda.
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a question, more or less. There is a correction that needs to be made to the policy notes. So is that, can we still just approve with that correction? Or how do we address?
Have you requested that the correction be made?
I just noticed it in the notes when I sat down this evening.
Then I would suggest that we remove the policy committee meeting from the consent agenda and not vote on this. So we can either vote on this and decline it, or we can remove the motion.
Amended.
So amend the motion? Okay.
Would you like to amend your motion?
I move to amend the motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. A, approval of minutes. May 6, 2025, regular meeting. May 13th, 2025, community dialogue. May 16th, 2025, Finance Facility Committee meeting. B, Head Start Director's Monthly Report. And C, personnel items.
Support.
Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Dr. Turner, to approve the consent agenda. Items A, 1, 2, and 4, and items B and C. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes as well. Thank you for that. We will look at the policy committee meeting minutes as amended and include that in the next consent agenda. Are there any reports from board representatives? Yes?
Yes, just a brief report from the Farmington, Farmington Hills Education Foundation. After a year without an executive director, we now have... we now have Chris Dobie and Carolyn Trapp working as our co-executive directors of the Farmington Farmington Hills Education Foundation, and they have already hit the ground running and are doing a spectacular job. So thank you to Chris Dobie and Carolyn Trapp for stepping up in service to our community in this fashion. It really is labor of love.
Thank you. Any other reports? Yes, Mrs. Heinrich?
Yeah, the Oakland County School Board Association, June 18th meeting. The STEMI trailer from Oakland Schools is going to be there as a preview, and the invitation is out. So all board members are invited to our SCP and attend that meeting. And also, the Board of Directors is having a planning meeting. Actually, it's tomorrow, but if any board members have any ideas or any educational programs or information that you think would be helpful to be presented at future Oakland County School Board Association meetings, let me know before tomorrow, and I will bring it up to the Board of Directors' planning meeting.
Thank you. Any other reports? Seeing none, we are now adjourned. Thank you. May I ask each of you to hang back?